And call this meeting to order. Let the record show that all six board members are still here. Mr. Barbiere is absent. Mr. Superintendent, we had one item added, P3. Anything else to add?
No.
And two items that were withdrawn, CI1 and LD1. Any other items to withdraw?
No.
All right. Good cause in this meeting is included for P3 in order to give the employees impacted by this recommendation to start their jobs as soon as possible. Oh, yes, we have to do the pledge. Sorry about that. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this point, we have no items pulled from consent. Does anybody want to pull any items from consent? Seeing none, there's your motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Mrs. Andrews, second by Mrs. Brill. Any discussion? All in favor, all opposed. Are there any abstentions or disclosures? Seeing none, we'll move into superintendent's report and board member comments. Mr. Oswald.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. And good afternoon, board members and to the public out there. I know a number of us had the opportunity to be in here a little earlier this afternoon to see the swearing in of six more officers to our force. Congratulations to Chief Kittero and your hiring. I think that now brings us up to 81. So, great job there. Also, I'd like to recognize the more than 250 volunteers who came out Saturday to the Comcast Carers Beautification at Forest Hill Elementary School. Teachers, families, tutors, Comcast employees, and even the school nurse who were up very early in the heat to work on landscaping, painting murals throughout the campus, and sprucing up that striping in the parking lot and drop-off loop. As Principal Scott McNichols said, "The students will feel uplifted and walk a little taller thanks to your kindness and willingness to get a little dirty." So, thank you. Also, last Friday, we celebrated the district's volunteers and business partners who dedicate their time, expertise, service, and business dollars to support Palm Beach County schools. Our district has more than 44,000 dedicated and selfless volunteers who donate their time to Palm Beach County schools last year. This is worth an estimated $24 million contributed to the district. We appreciate your continued support of our schools and our students. And speaking of being appreciative, let me say to the more than 12,000 teachers in the classroom and the numerous other educators who are in our offices and schools throughout the district, we appreciate you this week. Let's take a moment to watch a special message from Dr. Fanoi to our teachers.
Hello, teachers. This week, May 6th through the 10th, is Teacher Appreciation Week. On behalf of all of our students and staff, I want to say thank you. Because of you, we have watched our graduation rate climb to 91.7%. Because of you, we are closing the achievement gap. As a son of a former teacher, and as a former teacher myself, I appreciate and understand the dedication and tireless efforts in the classroom. You are driven by a passion to help each student realize his or her full potential and to achieve a world-class education. You are a mentor, an inspiration, and a role model for children. Never underestimate the impact of a pat on the back, a kind word, or a friendly smile. The impact you have on our students helps shape their thoughts and the way they view the world and themselves. So, I invite you this week to take a moment to reflect on a teacher who played a positive role in your life. Then, realize that the students sitting in your classroom may one day reflect on you with that same admiration. Thank you again for all that you do for our kids.
In addition to Teacher Appreciation Week, did you also know it's also Nurse Appreciation Week? It seems fitting to me that teachers and nurses share this appreciation week each year. They both are selfless heroes in their profession who educate us and keep us healthy. So, in addition to thanking our teachers, I'd like to also thank our school nurses who are there for every tummy ache and playground wound that our teachers may have. Thank you, nurses. Let's have a round of applause for our teachers and our school nurses as we show appreciation this week. And if you can believe it, this year is almost over. Next week, we begin the 32 graduation ceremonies where we will have the opportunity to shake the hands of the students of the class of 2019. Year after year, this is one of the most exciting times in the school year. I encourage everyone to take the time to watch a graduation ceremony or two as they will be streaming live on the district's website and on Comcast Channel 235. Regardless of if you work in a school, at the district office, or a member of our community, it's worth the time to see the excitement on the students' faces and be inspired by their achievements. It is a reminder for all of us to the important work we are doing, a reminder for our community as to why we make the collective investment in public education. Congratulations, class of 2019. And finally, for those students who are not graduating this year, which is most of you, it's time to talk about preventing that summer slide. The student district has once again put together our summer inspirations websites with learning tools, tips, and suggested reading material for all of our students. I encourage parents to take a look at the very many resources that are available and take a commitment to spend a little time this summer, even if just a couple of hours a week, to spend time using these lessons that are at your fingertips. These, again, resources are available on our website. This concludes my comments for this evening.
Thank you. Board member comments. Mr. McQuinn.
Sure, I promise. I'm sure that when we get through all of the graduations and successfully close out the school year, we will be reminded of all of the groups who helped those kids get across the stage. So, I'll save that for now. I would like to recognize specifically, again, the ongoing support with grant funds from the Mary and Robert Pugh Fund. It's millions of dollars more since I sat here almost three years ago and talked about the total money that they put in our high-poverty schools. And in particular, Louise Grant, who administers that money. Yeah, I saw her sitting there. She doesn't want us to look at her. What she does is quite special in that she wants the, insists that the school, or in terms of district, it may be leadership at the district level, but that we're growing capacity. It isn't just throwing some money at us and saying, "Well, okay, you get it. You do what you say you're going to do, and you do it." It is growing capacity. And I've seen that myself happen, talking about the conservatory school and so many others. So, I'm not going to get into all of those, but there is one on the agenda tonight that we passed. But the other important thing that Ms. Grant does is she personally follows up with the schools, and that's not often the case. So, it's a ton of money that we appreciate, and we appreciate the individual follow-up.
Thank you. Mrs. Whitfield.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a quick moment to talk about two things really quickly. The first is a couple, last week, week before last, month ago, something like that. I don't know. It all runs together. We had Julia Mate from our curriculum department come and ask us if we wanted to go see a STEM Spiration School. I know Dr. Robinson is scheduling right now to also go, but I wanted to recommend to my colleagues to go and see this in action. This is also funded through Pugh, so thank you so much, Ms. Grant. The thing that I was so excited about it is with all this conversation surrounding project-based learning, this is a way that they have figured out to expand this to so many schools. So, I was at Grassley Waters today, which fabulous school. Oh, my goodness. When you see the teachers and how inspired they are, it really brings home Teacher Appreciation Week. They were amazing. They hosted me for two hours this morning. I think I drove them nuts. I asked so many questions. I wanted to see every single classroom that was doing all this work. And I got to see the discovery education. People were there, actually. I just happened to show up on a day that they were actually training the teachers. So, it was a really fabulous way to learn about how they're expanding project-based learning. They are in a few of our schools, so I just wanted to encourage my colleagues to go and see that. The second thing is that at our last board meeting, I'm not trying to reopen this discussion by any means, but I wanted to clarify some comments of mine that were possibly taken out of context so that I could be exceptionally clear about it. When we were talking about the expulsions at the last meeting, one of the things that I had mentioned was that we needed to look into what the state did allow. And just to be really clear, I'm not saying to not pay attention to what the state is saying, but to make sure that we are following the rules of the state because I believe safety is the most important thing. And I really want to be clear that I'm not trying to go around laws set by the state. So, just so that we are exceptionally clear through that, those were the intentions of my comments. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Brill.
Thank you. So, I thought I would do something a little different today in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week. I decided to research the origin of giving an apple to the teacher. Alas, it was not such an easy task. There apparently is no clear answer. I found some interesting comments from teachers themselves. One said, "Since families had been bringing food to teachers since before there was public education, apples were among the items brought. They are relatively inexpensive, and they keep pretty well." Another said, "It was portrayed in the Hour Gang short films made in the 1930s and 40s, but certainly, it doesn't happen anymore. Families do sometimes give gifts to teachers at the holidays, but a single apple would be seen as a bit odd, and many of these days, many of these days prefer to select their own fruit and wash it well before eating." Finally, yet another said, "It would be a relic from paying frontier teachers in the form of food. It could be based on the Adam and Eve story in the Bible. Most likely, it was influenced by the Bing Crosby song, 'Apple for the Teacher.'" Having read all sorts of explanations, including a rather lengthy one from Smithsonian.com, I'll go with this. "The tradition of giving an apple to a teacher started in the 1700s before governments around the world paid for education of its people. Poor families in Denmark and Sweden gave teachers baskets of apples and potatoes as payment for teaching their children. So, teachers, although we pay you with slightly more than apples and potatoes, I want to express my attitude. Your devotion to your students and passion for your profession is evident in all that you do. Thank you, thank you, thank you."
Mrs. Andrews.
Thank you, and good afternoon to everyone. And tonight, I heard a few of you talk about the conservatory school. Well, I had an opportunity to visit the school and to see the project-based learning in play. Fabulous, impressive to see how different children learn and the independence. I'm happy to hear that the school district is going to do something. I don't know what yet, but you're committed to doing something, school board as well as the administration. I would like to see this in every school in Palm Beach County. It's awesome. And the Palm Beach County Council of Math Teachers, you do it every year. You celebrate your own. You selected the Math Teacher of the Year from the elementary, the middle, and the high school at the Palm Beach County Marriott. It's always exciting. I was happy to be the board member to shake the hands of all of the finalists and those that won. Making math exciting and fun in all of our classes is just a great thing. And lastly, I want to thank our community leaders. Over the weekend, I had an opportunity to be at Jess Santa Maria, former county commissioner Jess Santa Maria's, my brother's and sister's keeper. And this is a program where they give scholarships to our schools in the western communities. They give $500 to $1,000 scholarships to our students. The principals, you're out there every year. The students write an essay on why it's good to have a good heart and good citizenship, and how doing the right thing makes a difference. Thank you, Jess. Thank you, community leaders, in making it happen. And lastly, CAFSA, the Caribbean American Organization in Palm Beach County, giving scholarships to our students again. I saw so many students from Boca Raton, Jupiter, the Glades, receive those scholarships. So, as we move into graduation, we're looking at outstanding teachers, we're looking at outstanding students, and we celebrate our teachers with teacher appreciation. So, we know that we're doing the right thing because we see so many accolades, so many celebrations of good work. Thank you.
Dr. Robinson.
Thank you. So, I don't normally make board comments at these workshops, but I have two things I want to say. The first is to circle back to the previous workshop because she triggered my memory here. So, I would hope that we would see one of those fine bullets talk about the expansion of the project-based learning, especially with professional development, right? So, having said that, my other comment is actually because it is Teacher Appreciation Week. So, I want to tell you about Mrs. Hoffine. And Mrs. Hoffine was my fourth and fifth grade teacher. So, we circled a cycle. What is that term? So, she was, I had her for fourth grade, and she followed us to fifth, right? And so, and Mrs. Hoffine was old, right? So, she had those stockings that she knotted at the knees. You remember those? And those beige shoes. I mean, and I just thought she was like old as dirt, right? And so, but she was so good. So, she taught us, she taught us to play chess. She had us doing those SRA packages as a reward, as a reward now. Like, I'm trying to figure that out retrospectively. So, she also put me in this program that I now realize was a gifted program where we went to the community college like three days a week or something like that. But anyway, so she pushed us. So, this is the part I want to tell you about Mrs. Hoffine. So, every time I graduated from high school, college, and med school, she sent a card to my daddy's office. And I was like, "She's still living?" I mean, I really thought she was old, right? And every time, my daddy would say, "A good teacher determines whether or not they're good based on their students." Okay, daddy, right? And so, then, when I was a resident and I was doing an infectious disease rotation, I got this call to do a consult on a post-operative fever on this guy named Hoffine, right? So, it's not clicking in my head. You know, I'm like doing 36-hour shifts and stuff. And I go in there, and I see this guy, this old guy, right? And so, I'm trying to take his past medical history, and he said, "Well, it's 3:00. If you wait like another half hour, my wife will be here, school will be out." What? I, I, what? Are you Mr. Hoffine that was the crossing guard that used to dress up for Halloween and Christmas and stuff? I mean, seriously. I like almost melted there, right? Because this was like, seriously. And then, Mrs. Hoffine walked in the room, and I was just boo-hoo crying, right? And so, Mrs. Hoffine looked at me and said, "Debbie? Debbie Robinson, is that you?" And I, it was over, right? I'm telling you, I was done. I'm like, the nurses are looking at me like I have lost my mind. And so, and Mrs. Hoffine stood there in that room and named everybody in our fourth and fifth grade class. Everyone. I don't remember half these people, right? And she was saying, "You remember, he sat to the road, in the road to your right, two seats behind you." She named every student, and every student in my fourth grade class. Now, this is in Flint, Michigan, okay? Flint, Michigan, at Walker Elementary School, where I don't know, I think we probably had a high free and reduced lunch rate, and I think we had a low rate of high school and college education in the parent population, right? Each and every one of my classmates went to college, and all but one finished in four years or less. And Ms. Hoffine told me this, right? And she was just completely shocked that I didn't remember all these people and keep track of them, right? But, so in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, I want to just say how much I thank Mrs. Hoffine and all those like her because, I mean, in truth, if it wasn't for Mrs. Hoffine, I, you know, I don't know where I would be today. How about that? So, thank you, Mrs. Hoffine.
One of the items on the consent agenda today was P1, and I was going to pull it, but since I have an opportunity, I was absolutely thrilled today to see the promotions of some of our police officers because the quality of the people who are working in our school police department is unmatched anyplace in this state. And I just wish we could give the information to the public the way I wish that it was possible to do, for the public to realize just what goes on every day in our schools with our police officers. And to see the kind of people that were promoted today, I think is just an absolute, just a wonderful thing for us to be able to do. And the second thank you I need to give today is to Claudia Shea and Carol Bass. Hopefully, the board saw the high-tech thank you to teachers that was posted yesterday, but we worked, I think we did it on Monday and on Tuesday. It was out to everybody on behalf of the board to say thank you to all of our teachers. And Claudia said, "Next year, just wait because they've got something even bigger planned on all of the high-tech that can be done in that." But to everybody, thank you so much. With that, we'll move to our court committee report.
Good afternoon. Vice Chairman Shahar and board members, Deputy Superintendent Oswald. That's a change for me. My name's Lou Doctor. I'm here representing your construction oversight committee. We had a meeting on May 8th, and there were six items on your agenda today that's important that you review and you approve in order to hold the construction schedules that we have ahead of us. So, we had 13 authorized positions on Cork, and 10 members were at the meeting. Under construction purchasing, PC1, it's construction manager at risk for Verdi Elementary School. The motion was to go forward on that by a vote to 6 to 4. Although, let me tell you that the four votes were in favor of it going forward, but they wanted to highlight what they felt was an improvement that could be made in the data that was presented to them, and that was the reason why they voted no. Basically, they felt the superintendent's cost for the project should be specified for the project, and they felt it was too high. If you read the backup material that we're all provided, they're using the same superintendent for the entire Verdi job, which means ripping out the school, putting in the modules, transferring the kids, ripping down the school, building a new school, transferring the kids back. And they wanted one superintendent to coordinate that entire effort because it's extremely schedule-driven, and they wanted someone who was familiar with it. So, the compromise was go forward, but the staff will come back and give us a breakout of which of his costs are directly rated to demolition and which is the purpose of this project, and which are related to the support activities for the entire project. So, I don't believe the costs are going to change, but it will satisfy that request. And that was the reason for the negative vote, so I would obviously urge you to go forward with it. Construction, PC2, construction at risk for Cala Lusa Elementary School, that was recommended by a vote of 10 to 0. If we took a vote, that means it was not on consent and there was a discussion by the The issue on this one was they wanted more clarification on details on how the funding for the job was determined. There was a base amount listed, and as the job proceeds, they will submit a guaranteed max price, which obviously they'll be held to, and that's a standard way to do business. They wanted more backup for the rough cost that was estimated in the proposal. Obviously, the construction manager had that information and would provide it. When items like that happen, and Cork recommends they go forward, but we have questions, your staff records those questions, and once a month, we get an update of the question we've asked and the answers and replies. I have to compliment your staff. They're very thorough in terms of documenting the open questions, giving us the answers, and following up, and that's been working very, very well. That's why you never hear about it, what I have to say. The third item is PC3, Laxahatchee Groves. It was recommended they go forward. One of the Cork members had a technical question about the process that was going to be used to clean the material and felt that acid cleaning of brick was inappropriate. The construction manager who was in the room said, "We don't acid clean brick. We pressure clean brick, and we understand the possibilities for deterioration." And so, that issue disappeared, but that's why it wasn't on the consent agenda. PC4, Citrus Cove Elementary, that was also recommended by a vote of 10 to 0. One of the Cork members felt there should be a beneficial ownership document in the package. That was who the owners of the company are. It turns out, it was within the 672 pages that we received. He apparently overlooked it, so therefore, we proceeded and we went forward. PC5 was construction at risk for Coniston Middle School. It was moved forward by a vote to 10 to 0. The question that was raised was, are there flat roofs on the school, and how are the flat roofs going to be repaired and maintained? The construction people in the room said, "The biggest problem with leaking on flat roofs is not the roof, it's where the roof abuts some of the material. In this case, for example, the roof abuts a stucco wall." And when they went up on the roof and inspected the stucco wall, they realized they had to rip out and replace the wall because it was full of cracks, and the moisture was leaking through the stucco wall into the building, not through the roof itself. They're also changing the roofing material, getting rid of asphalt, which causes errors and smells, using a new silicone material that's been time-tested, has much longer guaranteed life, and it's easier to apply. So, it was a very interesting technical conversation that came out of the objection to the issue. And PC5, Coniston Elementary School, the question was on whether it's a flat roof or a pitched roof because they get handled differently, and that issue went away. Finally, one was PC6, Oak Haley Middle School. There was an issue raised that if they're renovating the plumbing, there should be shut-off valves that can isolate the bathrooms, not having to turn off the water for the entire school when they have to do a plumbing repair. Obviously, that wasn't in the specifications of the documentation. The contractor said if they are renovating bathrooms, and it's not there, they do put it in. They wouldn't do it as a change for any other reason, but if they're working on the restrooms in the facility, and a lot of them are, they would make sure the water shut-off valve was installed as part of the job. So, the point I'm making is Cork does a conscientious job and raises a lot of questions that could drive you crazy, but I think that's what you expect them to do. Are there any questions?
Mrs. Whitfield.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, first of all, you guys are so good. I mean, unbelievable. Your work must have gone up so much since we've gotten so much money to pay. I'm sure you guys are spending most of your life working on reading these documents, but I want to say thank you so much. And also, on your item where you were discussing Verdi and the split up of the superintendent, I was wondering just to ask staff if we could also see that in maybe an email or something when Cork receives that breakdown. I think that would be beneficial to us as well. I would love to see that. Thank you.
I do have to say, your staff is exceptional in the preparation of the material and the explanations, and I thought it would be a short meeting. There were six items that should have been approved. We had to extend it for an extra hour to cover all the conversations.
Mr. Doctor, how long does it take you to read all those documents you get for every meeting?
Well, I find out one thing. Five of the contracts are identical. So, while they're different projects, they're identical. The key is how the contractors respond and how they go about bidding it. But I'll let you know that secret.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, that's all the committee reports. We had no speakers today, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, second by Mrs. McQuinn. Any discussion? All in favor, all opposed? Motion carries 6-0. New business, we have one item, P3. Mr. Superintendent.
I recommend the board approve the personnel addendum as submitted.
Motion by Mrs. Andrews, second by Mrs. Brill. Any discussion? Dr. Robinson.
Thank you. So, I am thrilled, assuming this is approved, that we will finally have a CAO. Well, again, right? But I have a question about the positioning. So, the, I just want to be clear because the job description says the CAO assists and supports the deputy soup. The organizational chart as it exists does not include a CAO, or at least I can't find it. And so, I guess it's a two-fold. One, to confirm that the CAO will report to the deputy, and then, two, to ask legal, how often is the org chart supposed to be updated for the board's approval?
Ms. Rico.
Thank you. It's supposed to be updated annually, and that usually takes place during the budget approval process. So, as the org chart lives and breathes and gets modified through these types of changes, it happens in real life, and then you get the approval of the overall org chart for the annual statutory compliance. So, that's how it works.
All right. Dr. Robinson.
And so, I would like to get the confirmation that since the org chart doesn't reflect it, that the CAO is reporting to the deputy. Or correct me in the microphone.
Yes, that is correct, and we'll bring that updated. It will also be a cabinet-level position. And if I may, Mr. Shaw, so congratulations to Dr. Sheffield. We will We will -- And we will be introducing her when Dr. Fanoi is here in June, as well as the new principals that are on the agenda as well.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, call a question. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries 6-0. That concludes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mrs. Whitfield, second by Dr. Robinson. All in favor? All opposed? We are adjourned.